We will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will go right into our presentations. And Heidi?
All right. Good evening. This evening, we have Mackenzie Flynn here from Troone, one of our attorneys that represents the district. And last meeting, we talked quite a bit about the legislation regarding 31AA, which is grant funding regarding student mental health and safety. This is a piece of legislation that I think it is very important for the board, as well as the community, to understand. And so Mackenzie is here with us this evening to present this legislation and the impact. So thank you so much for being here.
Yes, thank you all for having me. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So thank you for that introduction. Yes, 31AA funding, not entirely new. It started back in 2022. The legislature gave a line item in the budget in the state ADAC specifically for student safety and mental health funding. Since 2022, more and more amounts have been offered allocated for this purpose. However, this year, the legislature, during all of the budget debacle, that I'm sure everyone is aware of and remembers fondly, they decided to include some additional conditions that we have not seen before, which of course is why we're having a discussion here tonight. To give those who may not be aware, there is currently litigation pending in both the Michigan Court of Claims, as well as the Federal Eastern District Court of Michigan, to talk about some of this language. So it is something that has been found to be problematic for a variety of instances, for reasons that I'm going to touch on tonight. But that is something that we can talk about more, is that litigation that's currently pending. So what does 31AA say? So it is $200 million allocated to Michigan school districts, ISDs, PSAs, and non-public schools for the 25, 26 school year. The language in here that we found to be concerning, that we want to discuss tonight, is here in subsection nine. So what does it say? Here generally is just what it is listed as. So to receive this $200 million funding, which of course is divided among all of these districts, a district must agree to be subject to a comprehensive investigation, must affirmatively agree to waive any privilege that may otherwise protect information from disclosure in the event of a mass casualty event, and must agree to comply with a comprehensive investigation. So it's a lot of reading for anyone not following with that. Essentially, in order to accept these funds, which do have to be opted into, so unlike normal grant funding, like a competitive grant, we're not applying. There is a form on the JEMsMARS website. The district administrator would need to log in, mark that you're agreeing to all of these conditions, and opt into funding. So what does this language mean? If you do opt into this funding, you're agreeing to be subject to all of these conditions that are listed right here. So we do have some concerns, as I have bolded here in red, because this isn't just accepting funds and we'll see what happens. It really will have significant operational impacts for the district if these funds are accepted. So one concern is that mass casualty event is defined within the statute. You know, it's not necessarily what we would interpret it to mean. The legislature has the ability to define what these terms mean. And for us, I think the intent, of course, we're focusing on student safety. The legislature was really envisioning catastrophic traumatic events occurring. But unfortunately, that is not what the language actually says. So I'll go through this list and also give some examples of what constitutes a mass casualty event, which would subject the district to all of the conditions we just talked about. So if a mass casualty event occurs, this could be either on school campus or any type of school-sponsored event. If it happens involving a bus collision, we've had, you know, students traveling from one event to another, all could be considered a mass casualty event. So this could be any of these four situations. So I've got it on the next one. So it is defined very broadly. It's incidents occurring on grounds or at activities. It could be significant injuries to not fewer than three individuals. We're talking if you have rival football teams playing together and students end up brawling. If three individuals are injured significantly, which unfortunately also not defined what that means, that could be a mass casualty event, which would subject the district to this type of investigation, as well as to waiving attorney-client privileges and any other type of privileges that are held. Same with any type of fatality. Again, I really don't think that this is what the legislature was intending, because it's really, really broad. Let's say you have a contractor for a construction project who has a heart attack and dies. That's completely unrelated to student safety and mental health. But that would be considered a fatality, which would subject the district to these conditions. Another one would be a demand that exceeds normal local emergency response capacity. An issue there really varies depending on your district and where your district is located. Here, that might be a very big event, somewhere like the UP, needing an ambulance could be considered this type of mass casualty event. So it's really, really, really broad. And honestly, I mean, I'm sure you can all think of examples of situations where this might have occurred. If you have a SWAT event where you've had a bomb threat, this could exceed your normal local emergency response capacity. So again, really, really broad. And then finally, a mass casualty event can be a sudden and timely surge of emergency service needs. So say again, let's use the construction example. If you had an asbestos release while you're doing work on a school building, that could be considered a mass casualty event for the purposes of this language. So you're probably asking, why does this matter? Because if a mass casualty event occurs, it triggers a variety of things that the district is going to be subject to. So if you have any of these events, which again, really broad, things that don't even involve student safety or students at all, you have to agree to be subject to an investigation and waive any privilege that would otherwise protect related information from disclosure. Just one moment. Now, the big issue here is, of course, the district values transparency. We have open meetings. We want to be able to discuss things openly with the public. But the attorney-client privilege is something that has been honored since, I think we were doing some research, since the Tudor dynasty. We have understood the attorney-client privilege is really important, because we want the board to come to us. We want you to seek legal advice. We want you to be candid with us. And you want us to be transparent, so that we can best represent the district's interests, the board's interests, and of course, student interests. So we need to have this kind of frank, candid conversation. So that's why this privilege exists, for those who may not be familiar. Now, this language is saying, if you have a mass casualty event, you're waiving this privilege just in general. It doesn't tell us any kind of time limit. It's not limited to the grant funding period of 2025 to 26. We don't know how far forward we're going. We don't know how far back they could look. You're essentially waiving all of these really honored and longstanding protected rights. So what are the implications of this? I've given you an idea of why the courts honor it, why it is protected. But what would it mean if the district had this type of mass casualty event and you agreed to waive these attorney-client privileges? One, enhanced civil liability for the board. So like I'd said, the board can come to their attorneys, ask for advice, ask for help, ask for ways to handle different situations. All of those confidential communications could be used in litigation. So if we were asked advice on how to handle something, and we gave you a best practice, that could be used in a future lawsuit saying that the district didn't handle something well. And any things that you were telling us to be transparent, to get the best legal advice you can get, could be used against you, which is very, very problematic for your district and will of course result in significant litigation costs that nobody wants to incur. Enhanced criminal exposure, as it says here, it could possibly eliminate communications with counsel if a state or local prosecutor pursues charges. We have seen in the past that where these types of events do occur, the state does look to administrators, board members, and has tried to pursue criminal charges. Public scrutiny. Of course, there's confidential information. Internal deliberations could be subject to public attention. If you did have any type of horrific incident, wouldn't have the ability to have these frank and open communications, such as discussing student safety and how to move forward and safety plans. You would have to have all of those conversations in an open session, which I'm sure is livestreamed on the internet. You wouldn't be able to talk about how to get better safety enhancements in the future. In a private setting, it would all have to be exposed to the public. And who knows who's going to be listening in on those conversations? Operational impact, of course. Like I said, the purpose of this attorney-client privilege is so that you can speak to us frankly and candidly, as can your employees when you're coming to talk to them on behalf of the district. Now, if they know that everything they say, including when seeking advice about best practices and what they should be doing, if those documents were there saying, hey, I wasn't doing this correctly at first, but now with your advice, I will, that could be exposed in an investigation or in any other type of situation after a mass casualty event. So I really think it is going to chill the way that people are willing to talk to all of you, talk to the board, and seek advice from us, because they're going to be afraid that anything they say could eventually be used against them. As the litigation that we've talked about earlier does express, there's also some constitutional concerns. This language is saying that your district is going to agree to be part of any type of investigation by the governor's office in all of these various events that could occur. Again, a bus collision, you know, student fight, all kinds of situations. You could be subject to this investigation. If the investigation occurs, you're going to have to talk to your employees. Teachers are going to have to be interviewed by the investigator. They're going to have to answer questions. And if they say no and implement their constitutional rights to not incriminate themselves, the district's going to be in a very difficult position, because you're either going to have to not honor your word to MDE to engage in this investigation, or you're going to have to, you know, penalize a teacher for exercising their constitutional rights, which again, will expose you to significant liability and is going to cause a lot of tension within the district. So concerns all around from there. And again, hindering transparency, not disclosing to us all relevant legal facts. You're not going to be looking to resolve situations, or maybe you haven't acted correctly in the past, because you don't want something written saying, oh no, we did this wrong. So I really do think it hinders student safety ultimately, because you're not really looking to improve. You're going to be worried about making sure that any improper actions in the past are not in writing. And finally, another implication of this waiver is long-term considerations. We have no idea how long this waiver is going to be. As I talked about, I think the budget language was really pushed through in talking to legislators myself. I don't think they knew this language was in there when they agreed to it. Obviously, the budget bill is not short. I think it was snuck in. And a lot of legislators don't even know what was in it or the real-life implications. So as I said, no time limits. It could apply to a letter we wrote to you 15 years ago, or it could apply to one in the future. We really have no idea what the language would be interpreted as. So it could lead to some concerns about communications from the past could come to haunt you in the future. Really big operational concern for the district. And of course, if you have the state looking into every single incident happening at your district, as I said, mass casualty event is not, I think, what we would all envision when we think of that. It's not just a school shooting. It could be a bus collision. Then you have the state coming to investigate the district. You have the state coming in and taking up your teachers' time and your resources, doing these types of audit and compliance reviews. So that is just a very brief overview. Happy to answer questions. But I will say that with the litigation I had mentioned, the opt-in deadline has been extended to December 4th at 11:59 PM. So it has been extended from the original November 30th deadline. So don't necessarily need to make any type of decision on opting in or out tonight. There is some time to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Start with questions. Bergit?
Sure, I'm happy to start. First of all, Mackenzie, thank you for being here this evening. This is a big tackle that's going on across the state, as virtually every district is facing a big decision here. There's a lot of unknowns. No entity so far has been willing to give us great guidance once this was brought out by the legislature and in the state. So I appreciate the work you've put into this, because you're also surmising. You're giving us what you think is going to happen, but nobody knows.
Right.
So I'm curious. I want to talk about investigations for a moment. And because as I'm listening to this presentation, if I'm just going on a limb, it's like, wait, are you saying the school districts that have had mass casualties, they haven't done investigations, so the state thinks they need to come and tell us to do investigations? Can you talk about that for a minute?
Yes.
Because it feels like it's taking local control away.
And that's been what a lot of boards have said. You know, I've spoken to quite a few boards at this point, and it does seem like it's the governor's office trying to come in and take local control away from the local districts. Obviously, I think if anything ever did occur, warranting an investigation. Boards are very quick to call us as their attorneys to come find out the facts, the circumstances, whether it complied with the law or board policy. So I can't say for sure what the governor's office or the legislature was trying to do, but in my experience, it really isn't necessary. I've always seen boards more than willing to have these types of investigations, because if something like this happened, I think everyone wants to know what happened, why it happened, and how can we prevent it in the future.
To your knowledge, in the area, and I don't know that you've been closely involved with anything, but I thought there were investigations done, just to point to our neighbors to the north. There were investigations, right?
Yes, yes.
I mean, I just want to say that out loud.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, there were investigations. And I do have to say, in speaking, I haven't spoken directly, but in those types of situations, there are those investigations that are done by the state to look into, again, the facts, what happened, why it happened, whose fault is it? And that's somewhere where the attorney-client privilege can be very beneficial, because you as board members also want to get to the bottom of things, but you also want to be able to deliberate internally and talk about it and figure out everything that happened as well, in confidence, and be able to have those candid conversations. And having that attorney-client privilege allows you to do that with your attorney and get that legal guidance about how to move forward. Again, if you have a situation occur, you want to be able to discuss next steps, how you can improve student safety in the future. And having that privilege in those situations gives you that ability.
Thank you. Heather?
So just to sort of piggyback on what Bergit was saying, if we as a board decided to forego accepting these funds due to potentially waiving, if I'm correct, foregoing privilege on behalf of the entire district, which would include potentially employees, in perpetuity or in the past, correct?
Yes.
So if those concerns, the constitutional implications and these types of things, it wouldn't prohibit us as a board or a cabinet creating a policy ourselves, stating that this is what we would consider a mass casualty event? This would be our response to spur an investigation if we wanted to, correct? Like if, I mean, we as a board, for transparency's sake, could essentially say, okay, we are not willing to agree to these terms necessarily, not willing to forego those risks, but transparency is important to us. And so essentially, like you said, it's not as if this means we don't want to be transparent or there's something to hide. And I think that's such an important point to make, Bergit. And I think us as a board would discuss that in the future, if that's something that we wanted to do and administration as well, to define what a mass casualty event is, with legal advice, and say, okay, if there's a third-party investigation, and at the time, God forbid, and that's something that the Board of Education would decide to move forward with, not necessarily a government entity. Because in this case, they would insert themselves. They would have the allowance to do that, correct?
Yes, and they would have freedom to determine, like I said, mass casualty event, very broadly defined, can touch on so many instances that happen. And yes, that's all that's required, is if a mass casualty event occurs, they can come and do this investigation. And to answer your first question, yeah, you guys are your own governing body. You have a lot of flexibility. You have board policies you're subject to. You have board bylaws, which are all things that the board has decided is important to the operation of the board. And you've established these bylaws that you're subject to. So there's nothing stopping you. I do think you should use our assistance in defining this casualty event to avoid what we have here. But yes, absolutely, if there's something that really is hurting student safety, if it's affecting mental health, there's nothing hindering you from creating your own policy that would have the similar investigation requirement, but done by you guys or someone that you're appointing. I know one board had indicated that the way the language is written, that the third-party investigator the state would use doesn't even need to be police officers. It could be a private entity. So it does kind of open a can of worms. But to answer your question, nothing would hinder you from creating a bylaw that has similar protections in place for an investigation.
Fair enough. Thank you. And then there was a point on there that said, we would need to fully comply with the investigation. So there was something that wasn't talked about, but there was on your slide there in the beginning. Fully comply with the investigation is something separate than foregoing attorney-client privilege?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you, in your opinion, feel like that can be enforced?
And again, I will say, this is a very novel law. We've seen nothing like this in other states. We haven't seen this language before. But yeah, it's saying, not only will you agree to be part of an investigation, you will fully comply. So any documents that they request, any witness interviews that they want, if they wanted to talk to your attorneys about it, they would have that ability. And as I think I touched on earlier, this could be really complicated when it comes to employees, because they really do seem to be in tension. Because the district is saying, we'll comply with this investigation. Whatever you want, we will do it. Notice, you know, attorneys like the word reasonably. Usually, we would say reasonably comply. So if there's something that's unreasonable, you don't have to do it. This doesn't say it. Anything that they're requesting, you're going to have to do. So again, that's where it gets really tricky too, is what if you have an employee that doesn't fully comply? It puts the district in a weird position, because you either have to decide to violate what you told MDE you would do, or penalize a teacher or district employee for trying to assert their rights, or maybe not wanting to incriminate themselves.
Fair enough. Thank you. Jake?
Is there a concept, if, to build on what Heather said, if we were to hire our own investigator, that's our policy, to do that, is there a concept of investigator privilege? That if an investigator discovers something that has sort of the same weight as attorney-client privilege?
Yes, and that's very similar purposes as the attorney-client privilege. That's a common law thing that's been around since before the United States was a country. The investigator-client privilege is actually in Michigan law. There is a statute that specifically acknowledges that when you're doing an investigation, you want people to speak very openly, right? You don't want anyone hiding facts. You want them to tell you everything this investigator needs to know. So in order to encourage that open communication, we have this privilege to say that this investigator isn't going to share that with everyone. If you had other types of litigation outside of this context, it wouldn't be discoverable. You know, another attorney couldn't say, oh, I want these documents. Again, recognizing that you need to have a bit of privilege in order to have these people speak openly and transparently. So that is something that Michigan does recognize. And yes, exactly like you said, with a third-party entity, the privilege would be recognized.
So when it says waive any privilege that would otherwise be protected, since there is a state law for investigator-client privilege, you would also be waiving the district, we would no longer be able to have an investigator. Whatever's disclosed to the investigator is subject to full disclosure.
Yes, absolutely. So attorney-client privilege is the main one people think of. But yes, it says any privilege. So those are the two we think of off the top of our heads. Attorney work product, all of these privileges that would normally, again, encourage open communication would be waived and would have to be disclosed.
So it sounds like the concern is, what is the quality of the investigation? And that if people are concerned, if I tell an investigator this and I inadvertently incriminate myself, that's going to be disclosable. So then you'll have employees, circular logic, you're back to employees not wanting to participate in this, because I'm not fully aware of what, I'm just trying to help the investigation, and I could be incriminating. So then the district, we would have the situation of, while our employees are not fully complying, so back to that piece of it. But the big concern is if this happens, this funding is all about creating a safer environment, and it doesn't seem to create a safer environment if we won't be able to, if people are, they're not willing to speak to the state-appointed investigator due to lack of protection that we as a board could provide them. If we don't opt into this money, have our own investigator, we would be able to get better investigations than we might be able to get if we opt into the money and the state investigation is, the employees would feel, why would I talk to them?
Yes, exactly. If that's the situation, I worry that if someone tried to talk to an employee, what would you do if you know it's going to be subject, you're going to get your own attorney to protect you? So yeah, having these privileges, exactly like you said, it's to encourage people being candid, open communication. You can say things knowing that it's not necessarily going to lead to you having to incriminate yourself. So yes, if you opt into these funds, because it applies to any privilege, it really could hinder, you know, teachers, other staff, from wanting to openly disclose things.
Just a point of clarification, well, not a point of clarification, but you just said something. So by waiving the privilege that waives our privilege with you, that could place additional financial constraints on employees, because at that point, they would need to retain their own counsel. And that is not a financially doable thing for many people, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Because if Heidi reaches out to our office saying, I need guidance on this or this, without having that privilege in place, if she wants to seek open advice, would need to get her own attorney. Same for every single employee would need to get their own attorney.
So that, just, so it's very clear, that would go from Heidi all the way down to every single one of our 900 approximately employees.
Yes. So this would be technically the board waiving their attorney-client privilege, but because it's, you know, obviously, you're an organization. You're not an individual. So it would affect anyone that we are representing on behalf of the board or the district. So it could also affect any employee.
Got it. Bergit?
So thank you. I think the most disturbing thing about all of this to me, and we haven't I think the most disturbing thing about all of this to me, and we haven't said it out loud here, is naming this. It's basically giving up our constitutional rights.
Yes.
And not just for ourselves, but for the entire district.
Yes.
And I can't think of any other entity in the state or the country that that's being asked of.
Nope. As I said, this is not anything we have seen before. Obviously, this, these events are tragic things that occur throughout the country. Our research hasn't indicated any other state trying to do this. We've never seen anything like this. Where yes, it's asking everyone to set aside these very protected constitutional rights. And hold, it's, it's quite coercive, because it's offering you a significant amount of money--
Money for students.
--in exchange for your rights. So it's, I'd say, the legislature really is putting your board in a very, very difficult position--
Absolutely.
--of having to decide what's best.
And I think, just again, to piggyback on that, it's not to say that transparency isn't something that we want. And I think that with, with the coercion of take this with these qualifications, it's, it doesn't, one doesn't necessarily equate to the other. Doesn't mean that we would be opposed to any of those provisions of an investigation or transparency. It's protecting, it's saying that we're, we're making a decision that could hold the livelihood and, and, you know, essentially those fundamental protections that need to be there. And so I appreciate that. You mentioned in the beginning, there is litigation currently that's delaying this.
Yes.
What is that litigation specifically attempting to do?
It is attempting to challenge a lot of these conditions. So there are two different cases going on. One was filed in the Michigan Court of Claims. It's attacking on several different fronts. One is under some statutory drafting requirements, the privilege or the waiver privilege, because there is a lot of case law saying how you need to waive a privilege. You need to be informed of what you're waiving, and this language doesn't do that, because you have no idea what you're waiving, which is contrary to everything we've seen in case law. So that's what the Court of Claims issue is. That's the one that has led to MDE extending the opt-in deadline to December 4th. Then there's a federal case, which is dealing with questions of federal law in the Eastern District of Michigan, and that's dealing with a lot of the constitutional issues that we've touched on.
Okay.
Because exactly like we talked about, it could lead to a violation of the Fifth Amendment, because it's requiring an employee to incriminate themselves, which like we said, there, you said over 900 individuals this could affect.
Right. I have a question for administration.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this, I know I've asked in a previous meeting, the amount of funds that is at stake here. Could you remind me, do you have that offhand? If not, that's okay, but--
Our current estimate that was given was about $1 million. They have come out and further said 140 per pupil.
Okay, got it.
But around a million.
And we've, it's been the opinion of administration that the services that we currently have in place for these funds will continue, that the, the district, if we were to not accept these conditions, that we will still prioritize essentially that these things continue in our budget somewhere, essentially.
Yes, they would be prioritized, because it is dealing with student safety and mental health.
Right.
That, that is our top priority.
All right.
But there would be other things that, obviously, if we don't have that million dollars--
Yep.
--we'll spend a million on safety, but that's a million dollars of programming decisions that you would then have to, to look, potentially look into.
Potentially. At this point in time, we do not believe that to be the case, because the past year, we have been, right, as, as people are leaving or retiring, right, we've been looking at every position. So knowing what we know now with the amount of retirements, looking at our enrollment, we do think that for this next year, we would be okay covering those costs.
Yeah, so a one-year--
Yeah.
--decision, but as we, as you mentioned, that signing up for this one year could put an indefinite length of time on either side.
Right.
Right.
And, I mean, I will say this, we've never seen this in 31AA, so who knows if, and of course, because it is the state aid budget that is adopted each year, so there would be an opportunity for next year's funding for the legislature to not include this language.
Go ahead, Burgett.
I just wanted to point out one thing that is in your language. I don't remember which, which one, which slide it is, but it talked about the futuristic and retrospectively.
Yeah.
And there's many things in this that the guidance is just so vague and unclear, we don't know what it means, but it smacks of ex post facto, which is, can you talk about that?
Yes, I mean, that is a big concern. There's no time limits at all related to this waiver. So it could lead to actions that have already occurred, situations that could be considered a mass casualty event from the past, being investigated, potential liability being found for something that's already happened. And again, there's no time limit. This could go back 10 years, and they would have the ability to look into that, which again, could lead to exposure, could lead to liability.
But it also, if we had in the past, an attorney-client privilege communication about an employee or a student event, and then that employer or student was involved in what is now defined by their mass casualty event, that could remove the privilege, which was, and if there was something in there, then it be, that will all be disclosed, or subject to disclosure at that point, because it would, it would, by signing up to this money, it would remove that, potentially remove that past privilege.
Yes, that's something that we have highlighted as a concern in some of our correspondence, is yes, no time limit. It could be used to apply to a mass casualty event from long ago. And again, this language waives any privilege that would protect information related to that event. So if the governor's office wanted to look at an event from the past, there's no hindering that. There's nothing in the statute saying that you can't. And yeah, a letter from 15 years ago, given to an entirely different superintendent, dealing with an entirely different board, would not be protected and would be subject to disclosure, and could be used to find a finding of liability.
It's got to do with something? You look like you were--
It was the same thing regarding to, to get those funds for one year, you're kind of on the hook forever, right?
Right.
Like, because you can't undo the fact that you're, you're taking those dollars.
Yes.
I just, you just made it very clear, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, and that's the thing in Michigan, is once you waive the privilege in one situation, you're waiving it for every single situation. So if you're waiving it for these purposes, you're also waiving it in any future unrelated litigation. You can't, you know, pick and choose when you are or are asserting the privilege related to those documents.
So just to reiterate the next steps, I think these lawsuits have an impact on what we need to do next. Can you walk us through kind of the next couple of weeks in the timeline of what we think will happen with regards to this?
Yes, so there was a scheduling order recently released. There is supposed to be a hearing, a scheduling hearing, where they'll talk about next steps for the court within the next few weeks. The hearing was today, this afternoon, I believe, so I'm not sure what came from that yet. But there are going to be pleadings and filings done, both from the group of school districts, their attorneys on their behalf, that will be filed, as well as from the state, so that the court can consider it. There is currently a motion for a preliminary injunction, which is essentially just an equitable way to stop all action, because again, that deadline is definitely looming and causing a lot of stress for boards not having sufficient time to feel everything out. So we would have to see what would happen there, and then litigation is never short. So I think it would be figuring out exactly what the court orders. A lot of it is going to be for the court to determine. So like I said, opt-in deadline currently extended to December 4th, but you'll want to keep monitoring the situation. I know that we'll do our best to keep everyone apprised of what is going on. So very gray area right now. That's unfortunately the best that we have.
When you say the state has to file a response, is that the attorney general, is that MDE? Who, who, who is arguing the case? I mean, obviously, the school districts are taking up a case that says, these provisions are vague or unconstitutional, depending on which venue they're in. But who, who is the state in this case?
Yes, so it would be the AG, the attorney general's office, who would be pleading and drafting these briefs. And MDE is also a party, but again, the attorney generals would be the ones who would be doing it, the assistant attorney generals.
And just for everyone's knowledge, for us, no decision's going to be made tonight, obviously, because there's these court cases ongoing. So the plan, as of right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, obviously, is for us to see how these court cases play out, and then call a special meeting if, if the deadline does not change again right around December 4th, if that's what we need to do, because our next scheduled meeting is until December 10th. So if we need to come together again before then, that is what we will do.
Right, and yeah, that, just to touch, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, but to be clear, if, is this judge on the December 3rd's ruling is those--
Correct.
--this goes away--
Correct, then we don't need to come together.
Heidi doesn't need anything from us, she can just--
Correct.
--move forward to 31AA.
Correct, and that's meaning if--
That's the best case scenario.
--if these stipulations are still in place, and if a judge, hopefully, removes these, Heidi has, you know, full, obviously, in full capacity to move forward with accepting the money, but if the stipulations do not go away, then we'll be back together for a special meeting.
Yeah, and just to give some context, the attorney-client privilege is something that can only be waived by the client. In this instance, it would be the board. The board, of course, can only make decisions at an open meeting, so that's why really, it's, you can delay until that opt-in deadline, but the board would need to meet as long as those conditions are in play, if they wish to move forward with accepting the funds.
Correct.
And that is Thursday, December 4th at 11:59 PM. So that gives us that week after Thanksgiving. But when is the court due to issue their finding or their, their ruling? Because I know one side has to respond, the other side has to respond. When is the court schedule, currently scheduled to issue an opinion?
Unclear, and sometimes courts can take quite a while with those. I know that there has been a push for it to be more expedient. From what I remember off the top of my head, it would be first week of December, is I think December 3rd, so before that December 4th deadline, is when we would expect some kind of order or something from the court.
Yeah, that's, that's, I have the paperwork right here. So yeah, and it does say, expected decision on or about December 3rd.
Build in a little flexibility.
So then we, knowing that, we would need a meeting--
The special meeting would have to be December 4th.
Would be on December 4th, unless this ruling waives, a court says, these restrictions are not valid.
Yeah, because if those restrictions aren't there, this is no different from the 31AA, well--
That we took last year.
My, very minor differences from what you've been seeing for the last three years. Otherwise, this is just another wonderful state aid allotment that you can use for designated purposes. It's really only this subsection nine language that's causing some heartburn for everyone. So if that's removed, it's just like any other grant provision.
Just for history to be, to clarify, we have participated and, and applied for 31AA money in every other year since 2022 that it has existed.
It's the first year for strings attached. Significant strings at that. Any other questions for Mackenzie? Thank you so much--
Thank you.
--of course, for your time tonight and all of your work leading up to this and your continued work on this. We appreciate it, and have a great night.
Well, stay tuned.
Thank you, right? Stay tuned. Okay. Lost my stuff. There she is. Okay, so with that, we will move right on to our next presentation. And Andrea?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to welcome Donna Hanson and Kristen Stofflet from Plant Moran, as they are presenting on the June 30th, 2025 audit results.
A little bit of a lighter topic tonight, okay? The attorneys and the auditors, but the audit is over, and it's all good news, so I will be efficient in my delivery of the results here. The board should have received the final deliverables, the basic financial statements, and the end-of-audit communication to the Board of Education. The single audit, the federal programs audit, that is still in draft form. We are waiting on the final compliance supplement that the Office of Management and Budget has yet to release, which, this is the guide that the auditors are required to follow in order to audit federal programs. This typically comes out in May or June each year. It still has not been released, so we're on hold until that is released. Actually, in the budget bill that was passed, there was a provision that was also added at the last minute in order to give us, like, a 30-day reprieve with MDE or districts that are required to file. So when the supplement comes out, and we're able to issue your financial statements, your federal programs report, we'll have 30 days in order to do that. So that is why one of those items probably still has draft on it. So moving on here. Do I have? Oh. Okay, here we go. All right, to summarize, for the fiscal year 25, June 30th, 2025, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. Unmodified opinion is the highest form of assurance that we can provide, that the financial statements are fairly stated and can be relied upon. As mentioned, and we did discuss this in, in greater detail at the Finance Committee, we did test the federal programs. We, we are planning on issuing a unmodified opinion on the federal program audit, once we are okay to do so. We did test the IDEA program, the special education cluster, this year, and we had no findings or question costs related to that program. Also wanted to note, in addition to auditing the numbers in the bond and sinking fund funds, we also look at the compliance requirements related to those dollars. So the allowability of those dollars and how they are allowed to be spent in accordance with the bond rules and sinking fund rules, in addition to the ballot language that the community has approved, we did not have any findings or concerns with regards to those expenditures. The Uniform Budget Act, districts are required to follow this law with regards to budgeting. We did, we do assess those processes and procedures in place, and the district has sound controls in place. We, you know, the board adopts the budget each year. The district, the administration is required to live within that budget, and you are not allowed to overspend the budget, and we have no findings there. Finally, GASB 101, this is a governmental accounting standard, comply, or uncompensated absences. This was a new GASB this year that was required to be adopted by the district. It speaks to how districts are required to calculate the compensated absences. So this would be accrued sick and vacation time, and what that liability is calculated to be. This doesn't affect the funds, it affects your full accrual financial statements. We did not find that the ultimate result of all the hard work that the business office did showed a meaningful difference in how they were, you were calculating it previously, so it was not significant, but it was a requirement, and it is required to, those rules are required to be adhered to each year. I'm going to touch on the highlights with regards to the actual general fund and the results of June 30th, 2025. This first graph details the general fund revenue and other, other financing sources. Total revenue for the year approximated $107.6 million, approximately, and the largest portion of that is from state aid funding. So that would be represented in orange here on the screen, approximately $76.7 million, or 71.3% of all the district funds comes from that state aid funding. Another component that comes through from the state is the state restricted retirement. That was around $6.2 million, or 5.8% of your funding. That is the MIPSers funding that flows into the district, but you're required to turn around and pay that directly into the retirement system. So it does appear you have $6.2 more million than what you, you actually have-- you have $6.2 more million than what you, you actually have to spend. And you'll see the other side of this in your expenditures. Federal programs in total at $2.7 million. And inter-district and other, and local source revenue, which is predominantly your non-homestead property taxes, is almost 13% of the district's funds. General fund expenditures, this graph is presented by function. So this essentially breaks those expenditures down by department. Total expenditures for the year was approximately $105.3 million. The largest portion of the district's funds, of course, goes to instruction and instructional support. So $78.4 million of, you know, of all the funding went into instruction instructional support expenditures, or 74.4%. The other categories depicted on the graph here are school administration at 4.9%, HR business administration around four, operations and maintenance, and transportation also reflected. And the other less significant categories include community service, communications, athletics, and the like. The next graph details general fund expenditures, but this time by object. So this details what the dollars were spent on. So it's, it's the same expenditures, just sliced in a different manner. Again, the total at $105 million, approximately. So this details that salaries, approximately 48.1% of the expenditures, and benefits at 29.2%. In addition to that, that state restricted retirement at 5.9% of total expenditure. So all three of those categories together are really the salaries and benefit costs to the district, which equate to around 83.2% of all the district's expenditures. Purchased services at 11.1% and supplies and materials rounds out around 4.1%. The next graph here is informational, and it reflects retirement funding over the years, a historical analysis. And it details 15 years, I think from 2011 up and through 2025. And there's a couple of things that are presented here on this graph. The, one is the per pupil foundation allowance each year. So if you look at the blue line that's going across the teal section of the bar graph, that depicts the annual foundation allowance per pupil that the district receives. And then year over year, the bar graph is actually reflecting the required amount of funding into the retirement program. So if you look back into 2011, the entire burden of funding into the MIPSers program, around $8.7 million at that time, was funded by the district and through their, you know, your own district dollars. Starting in 2013, the state started that funding flow-through, right, where funds came in and then went back directly into the system. And so that component there is reflected in orange. But as you can see, year over year, the amount of, the increase in the amount of that funding obligation on the district has, has increased. It tapered down slightly in 2024 and 2025. But year over year, the funding amount of the, that the district receives per pupil has stayed relatively flat in comparison to the significant increases that were required to be paid into the retirement system. So it does depict the, the burden that's placed on districts' finances with regards to the, the retirement program. Another graph here is general fund fund balance, excuse me, and this is also a 15-year analysis. Between 2024 and 2025, the district added to fund balance. So the result this year added to fund balance around $2.3 million. So you can see that increase from 2024 at $9.5 million up to $11.8 million for the year. That equates to around, at the end of 2025, around 11.2% of expenditures. Comparing that back and over the past 15 years, in 2011, it was at a high of around 18.1% of expenditures, and then seeing in 2016 around 7.4 would be the low over this period of time. And since that time, there has been relative stability in how the district has maintained that fund balance, working capital, to have that stability over this period of time. This, each graph is, is broken down by an unassigned portion, an assigned portion, and a non-spendable portion, which is the components that are reflected in the various colors. There we go. And finally, to recap the results of the finance and the general fund for the year, at the beginning of the year, fund balance was approximately $9.5 million. Revenues around $107.6 were over expenditures of $105.4 million, approximately, reflecting in that $2.3 million increase for the year, which resulted in an increase in fund balance to $11.8 million as of the end of the year. Again, that's 11.2% of expenditures. Absent the MIPSers flow-through funds that came through, your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures would be around 12.1%. In context, this equates to around almost six weeks of funding operations of the district. So to recap, you had positive audit results. You had no findings or question costs with regards to the audit procedures that were performed. I do want to thank Andrea Curtis and the Business Office for the time and effort that they put in in order to be prepared and close the books of the district in order to be audited. So appreciate your efforts and please share our thanks with the team as well. I'm happy to address any questions you may have. I know we did meet in, as of, in the Finance Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago and went through things in, in detail. But if any questions have come up since that time, I'm happy to address it.
Any questions or comments on the audits? Go ahead.
Just for the benefit of the community who may be watching, could you tell us the difference between, what non-homestead, you mentioned that, and what that definition is and where that money comes from?
Yeah, so non-homestead is when you have a business or a second home in, it's not the primary home of someone who lives in the community. So predominantly, funds that flow into the district in the, as a local source revenue would be from that 18 mils, which is the non-homestead.
Got it. Okay. And just, sorry, Heather, just to follow up on that, as a source of revenue, inter-district and other, could you touch on that a little bit, what that might be?
The largest portion of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrea, is Public Act 18 funds. And that would be kind of through the ISD and special ed-related funding. That makes up around, if I want to say around 11 million.
Eight point three five eight.
The largest portion of that, for sure. Yes.
Maybe also for people that might be watching, can you talk a little bit on the first slide? You talked about how you audited the bond and sinking fund compliance.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think a lot of people understand the ties that are, come with a bond and how we can spend those dollars. So could you go into that for a little bit?
Correct. So dollars that are spent out of proceeds from bonds and for capital projects are required to be tested for allowability. They, it is very defined what specifically those dollars can be spent on. Building, land purchases, you know, building new facilities, rehabbing facilities. Sinking funds also have specific rules, which are actually much more strict. And those are the, you can't do repairs or maintenance, or maintenance items out of sinking funds. So there's specific rules, that's one layer of testing. But then also what's addressed is how your ballot language was worded as well. And so if there were additional, more concise provisions in your ballot language, then those are also taken into consideration. Bids, how the district is bidding out work to contractors, making sure there's an open bid process. We do test bids as part of this as well, because there are rules dictated around that. So yeah, it is, it is strict as to what those dollars can be spent on, and that they have to adhere to the law, and they have to adhere to what the community approves.
Thank you.
Great question.
Other questions?
In your experience, does our fund balance feel like healthy to you? Essentially, in your experience of auditing potentially other districts and that type of thing, is it something that, as I think we have to have a certain, correct, Jake, you've spoken to this before, a certain percentage in our fund balance of our budget?
Yeah, it's only 5% that we have to have.
Got it. Based on, is that like a state?
Yeah.
The state will, the state will bring oversight into your, the state will bring oversight into your district if you drop under 5%. So we, for a while, had 10% because that was a goal. And then we were having problem, or issues with, minor issues, but you're not, you're not following your policy of having a 10% fund balance. So the question was, if it's our goal to have 10%, you don't necessarily want to put goals into policy. So we, we, we modified our policy in the, in the last year so that our policy reflects the statutory minimums. And, and, and that's just.
To allow flexibility.
To allow the flexibility to say, we were working towards, and then this year's surplus got us over our goal of 10%. And we will evaluate that what we want, what we've discussed is, we want to continue to run a surplus every year. But your fund, she had the chart up, your fund balance can sometimes go down as a percentage if your expenditures, if you, if you put, if you have a very small surplus in a year that you spend 2 million more than last year, your, your percentage of fund balance is now smaller. Your divisor got bigger, your numerator didn't, your percentage will go down. But in this case, our expenditures, I think, actually went down because of the, the, the federal monies that were, were coming out of play. But we're over 11% and, and we are going to continue to, to monitor that. So our goal is not to dip into fund balance in any year because, until you get to a, a 2020 type of situation where, ah, now we had to get into it. And you can see that recovered the next year. So it's there if we really need it, but we don't want to be in a situation like we were from 11 to 15, where the state was not giving us much more money and to maintain programming. And you saw, the board got into the very difficult decisions in 15, 16 to say, we can't keep running a $2 million a year deficit. It's not sustainable. So, long answer, but, but the point being, we got above our 10% goal, and now we get, we're in a little stronger position. But I, I know the answer is, our fund balance is very much smaller than the state average.
Yeah, so, so it's been with the COVID dollars and the grant funding that has, districts across the state have, have received, everyone spent it at different times. Most of it, I think, is spent now. But as of last year, I think the state average was around 27% of, of expenditures. But to your, to your great question, because like every district has to assess essentially what level of working capital they need at different period of times during the year. As we know, there are months that the district doesn't receive funds and still has to make payroll. You have to make sure you have enough cash flow for that. Grants are reimbursement-based, and so you expend those dollars, and you have to be able to do that before you get that money back via reimbursement. But I think tonight's presentation before this was a great example. You want to have some flexibility if there are mid-year surprises. We've had many years now where we haven't had a mid-year foundation allowance cut. That used to happen. I remember, what was it, 2011, 2012, a $470 per pupil foundation cut because of economic circumstances at that time. So it's, it's good to have working capital. You don't want to have to borrow money, which costs the district interest to fund your operations. But you, and you want enough to be able to manage through if there's some mid-year surprises as well.
I just want to say, in my time being here, and you can attest to this, Donna, that the, the discussions about fund balance have been all over the place. And early on, when my, 14 years ago, when I was first on the board, it was not uncommon for districts to have, we had a high fund balance at that time. It was not uncommon for these 18, 20, 25% fund balances. And it's a, it's an interesting game because the state will play it with you. At some point, they want you to save, they want you to do things, but then they'll turn around and go, oh, my gosh, you guys have saved too much money. If you guys saved too much, we're not going to give you as much. And, and I've seen it go all, every which way but loose over these years, and trying to find if you, you kind of silence out some of that extraneous chatter about it, and you come to what, what works for Lake Orion? Where are we comfortable? What is a reasonable budget? And, and how do we balance that? And how do we have a fund balance that is reasonable but not exceeding excessive? Thank you.
So we did discuss the 27% number, and I, that is a, that is not add up all the district budgets across the state in 27% as a fund balance. That is a, take the 500 or so local school districts, and the average is 27%. But the average student population in, in a district, the median student population is probably between 2,000 and 2,500. The median budget is probably around 30 million. So the district, a $10 million district that has a $4 million fund balance is much district than, than a $100 million district that has an $11 million fund balance. Because they're just as, you know, to have a million-dollar problem with, with a septic field as, as we are. So there's certain absolute things that, that go into it. So larger districts tend to have below the state average fund balances, because the number, the absolute number just gets so large.
I was just gonna thank Donna.
All right. Any other questions for Donna this evening? Thank you so much, as always. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to learning highlights and communication update.
Thank you very much, Tino. We're gonna start with slime. Mr. Paul Mary at Weber, you know, they have these fun-run incentives, and one of them was that he was gonna get slimed. So he wasn't sure what that was gonna look like. But the PTO, as I was talking to them backstage when they were getting ready, they were talking about the mix of trying to get the right slime constituency, consistency. And that was a challenge. But the silly string was kind of a surprise to him, too. So the kids got to be in on that. So that was fun. The Career Readiness Rodeo was an opportunity, the career, the career seventh graders at Scripps Middle School had people come in to connect the dots between what they're learning in school, how the skills are used in the real world. They went through stations, were volunteers, you know, showed how they use ELA skills in everyday work. And Mr. Mercer can thank me for not using a picture of her in her rodeo outfit.
Well, hey now.
Slide, that would be hilarious.
Cabinet was able to see it, though, so they got a preview. Veterans Day, obviously, you know, our district is always a very respectful Veterans Day, and we had two schools that did a great job of honoring it. Weber, you know, they had all the staff and students, you know, submit photos and, and they did, of friends and family who they knew, so all the students could participate. If they didn't have someone in their family, someone nearby, and they put it all up. That's the one on the top. And then on the bottom, it is Stadium Drive, where they had staff, two staff members who were veterans, and they recognized them. Also at Weber, you know, Mr. Paul Mary, who we saw earlier, served in the Navy. So, and at the high school as well, they recognized all of them. And Dr. Haas met with the. And Dr. Haas met with the different people who were veterans in the school, and LAM did a feature on one of them. There's one more Veterans Day thing to happen on Friday at Orion Oaks. In the morning, they're going to have a Veterans Day assembly, and that'll be really nice as part of their monthly community circle. Blessings of Backpack, saw Burgett there when they had that last week, and they were doing their pack. And it was, you know, I was trying to get there once or twice a year just to see, you know, what they're doing, because it's really something that is unseen by our community but benefits so many and the students, you know. One of the things that also came out, it was actually the Day of Kindness was, the World Day of Kindness was last week, so this is the day of, it was really an opportunity to see what these people are doing in terms of kindness. But it also became an outgrowth. I went and I talked to two Blanch Sims, former Blanch Sims staff members, Tina Zach and Tracy Wellman. And they told me about a way they were honoring a former teacher in the district for a long time named Lynn Burrell. And what they've done is they've created this group, it's open to everyone, and just to do kindness tasks in her name. And they created these little cards and a Facebook page, and you can put with the, what you do, either buy someone a coffee, or you can do a larger, grander gesture, like what one of them did is to support a Blanch Sims class that wanted to get something for the students. And someone supported it that way, you know, privately as well. So it's really an opportunity, it's something that they've just done on their own, and there's no funding or anything. It's just kindness opportunities in this woman's name, and her family is very appreciative of it. So if you want more details and follow the page, let me know. I can share that. The Inflatables Race, there's always fun things happening at, with these fun runs. And this is one of the things, this is one of the rewards at Blanch Sims for the fun run. There were 20 Inflatables who went around. Mr. Kuregoshin, who's the gym teacher, won the race because he had a little more flexibility than some of the others because they were in the full suits and everything like that. But it was a lot of fun and, you know, Mr. Noose is always up for a costume. Swimming, the state finals are coming here. Haley Grisdale's done a wonderful job, obviously, with our, our team, and she's very proud. A couple of weeks ago at the league meet, which these pictures are from, 48 of 52, 92% of the team had personal best or season best swims. And they finished third in the OAA, which is really impressive, and I think they'll have a strong showing this weekend at the state finals. So HOSA is, you know, it's the medical foundations, we've grown the medical foundations group last year and then this year. And this is a club that's kind of come out of it, and they compete throughout the state. And they really had a great job, great job in the second year, you know, they qualified, they went to the regional there at Troy and qualified 18 Dragons for April's Student Leadership Conference in Traverse City. There's a ton of different competitions, but just a couple of them, there's about 20 or 30 of them, but biotechnology, clinical lab science, clinical nursing, CPR, first aid, creative problem solving, dental science, EMT, et cetera. There's a whole bunch, and it's really an opportunity. And this is something that, you know, Drew and Heidi have really spearheaded, trying to get the medical foundations because it's something that students wanted. And it's been a robust success so far. The police visited Orion Oaks and for the younger students, the DK and the K students, listened to a presentation with Oakland County Sheriff's deputies, Lindstrom and Hyde, about their experiences. And they got the whole police experience, which was kind of cool. This is a social studies lesson. Corey Hadad, who's our instructional coach for the district in social studies, has worked with Oakland schools, created this, it's like a, they call it a suitcase, and it had all these tangible things to learn about the state of Michigan. And they bring it in, they set it all up, the kids go station to station. All of our third graders in the district did this, and some of the fourth grade classes as well. Drew, this is a partnership, right, with Oakland schools and really an opportunity for our students in social studies to get something that science has a lot.
Yeah, it's really cool, the hands-on component, and every student gets a chance to experience it and really neat with Michigan history. So yeah, Corey does a great job in getting that into our kiddos.
Thank you. So that was really something special. We'll have more video with Inside the Dragons on that topic coming up. So Stadium Drive had their talent show yesterday, and you know, those kids, they all just had all different things. We saw karate, we saw the young man with the drums, we saw a comedian, there was a comedian act, and he really thought he was funny, and he was moving back and forth, and the kids thought he was funny. And all the adults were, were interested to try, because they were kid jokes. So the kids were getting them, and the adults were, what was that one? So it was fun. It's, it's always fun. They had the school performance yesterday, and the kids were going crazy. And I think the adult performance, the parent performance was tonight. And the special education pact, just closing up with that. Sarah Leggett, obviously, has done so well, you know, since she's joined us and done so much with our special education. This is something that some of you who've been on the board for a while remember, that we had, we had a local group of special education parents who were very active in a PAC. And I think that hasn't been as robust, but now, they went to this county meeting where they have a county PAC, and they're going to try to have some representation locally as well. Is that, Drew and Heidi, is that accurate, kind of about what's happening? So-
What's a PAC?
It's, it's like a, it's like a PTO, kind of, just advocates, special education parents advocating for their children, basically. That's what it's called. It's not a political action.
Parent Action Committee.
Parent Action Committee, yeah.
That's what I prefer.
Right. It's just kind, but it's an opportunity, and Sarah's like finding these ways to involve all people in this, and that's something that she's been wonderful with. So that is it. Any questions?
Any questions for Mark?
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, public participation related to action items on the agenda, and we have none, so that will move us to strategic area discussion items, governance with Heidi.
Okay, well, the legislative update was 31AA. As you see, we, you know, every day, more and more is coming out about that. So that has been top priority at this point. So that is what I have for the legislative update. Burgett, do you have anything on your end?
I do. So I wanted to provide an update because a week ago this evening, we had a government relations committee meeting from OCSBA. And in that meeting, we had a guest speaker, and her name is Amanda Klein. She was the State Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association. Her presentation included information about universal school meals, the American Heart Association's Tobacco and Vaping Prevention Network, and the cardiac emergency response plans now required by law. She shared that 1.4 million Michigan students benefit from the universal school meals, and she thanked schools for supporting that work. And the American Heart Association's key goal with the universal meals is to protect state funding for the fiscal year '27 and hopefully get it codified. As you know, it was kind of iffy this year, whether they were going to continue that or not. Her presentation about tobacco and vaping included discussions regarding supporting tobacco retail licensing and the PUP use repeal for Senate Bills 462 and 266. And by the way, those are very similar, if not almost identical, to what was it last year in the legislature, which we never got fully passed, although both legislatures supported it in their own way, they never came together to get it done. So hopefully those will move forward this year. Interesting, she talked about CERPs, that she shared the implementation remains uneven across the state, and it's mostly due to underfunding. She stated that if money is not appropriate for, appropriated for supporting this, then it cannot be enforced. That's not a problem for us. We were fortunate enough to have all that implemented in our, in our school district. But it is interesting to me when I continue to hear things like this across the state when it's literally inequitable just because the state didn't pay for, it was like an unfunded mandate. So they are seeking to make that, make funds available for that next year. We had an update from Lisa Hands Connect. I sent you all that PowerPoint. She does a nice job with that. I also sent you the PowerPoint that Amanda Klein shared with us. And I sent you a lot of attachments on there. And we had discussion and approved last week on a new legislative priority for Oakland County School Board Association. And it's to approve that Oakland County School Boards Association supports nonpartisan school board elections. We wanted to fast pace this, and in order to do it properly with bylaws and resolutions, there's a process. And you got an email yesterday, I'm losing track of time, was yesterday, from OCSBA about two new proposals for priorities and for resolutions and bylaws. And the association itself cannot advocate for it until that's passed by all the school districts, school boards. So we initiate that process, it takes 40 days, that takes it into January. In the meantime, another attachment on that email that got forwarded to you is a draft letter that David Randell's composed that you can use. I did talk to Julie about putting that on Letterhead, depending on what everyone is interested in. But the purpose is to advocate for nonpartisan school board elections with our legislators. We could, you could do it yourselves, get it electronically, electronically sign it and forward it. We could do it, one, we could all sign it, and I don't know, maybe Danielle or myself could send it. But I would love to see us advocate for that somehow. If I move right, there were some other links in there, too, about the vaping. I thought it was really interesting. Guidelines, I didn't know that the vape tools themselves had to be disposed of and properly. I just, I found that very fascinating. You got that information in your email. But I'm going to flow right into then that email from OCSB, and I wanted to just bring it to your attention. I know we just got it, and I know it's two new proposals. But the way we've usually handled that in the past is there's two readings. The way this all falls with these holidays is we have one more board meeting after this, assuming we don't have a special board meeting, between now and the deadline for this. And so I want to propose that in that December meeting, we have it, and we just vote on the first reading, so that it can get submitted in a timely fashion. So that's, that's all I got.
Okay.
Is there anything in our policies or bylaws about the need for readings? I mean, that's what we'd have to look into, is to make sure that we're not violating our-
We can do, I think they're for our own policies that we do do readings, but that the, that the policy states. I don't think it applies to the association, but we can verify that.
We just, I would say that would be an action next, a next step to make sure that we can do that.
But, yeah. But if that were the case, then in order to participate in the vote, we would have to vote to temporarily rescind that, to be on, allow us-
Or have a special meeting.
A second meeting. So it's, it's just a really awkward timing of this. We're not the only district that that's going to apply.
Understood. I just want to make sure that if we're going to, if we're going to do, if we're going to do something, we're, you know, our policy is what, what we say we do, and then we have to do what we say.
And this is why I'm bringing it up tonight, so that we don't get stuck in December and not be able to do anything.
Correct. Excellent. Thank you, Burgett. Okay.
Just making sure we do, the letter. When does that, do we need direction on that? What you would prefer to do, individual letters or one on behalf of the whole board?
For the nonpartisan issue. The advocacy letter.
Advocacy letter for nonpartisan school board elections.
I also don't think that we could send one on behalf of the whole board unless we had a resolution, because without a vote, we're just seven individuals. So how would it look to send something on behalf of the board? Because we are just seven individuals until we vote on something. So if all seven individuals send something, we can do that, but otherwise.
I hadn't seen, I would have brought you a resolution had I gotten a hold of one. But I, nobody has one.
And I'm not saying that, but procedure, but like on the procedurally, I just don't, when you said send a group letter, I, we don't have a method to do that.
Okay, so with that, then, let Julie know if you would like your own letterhead. Right?
Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough.
And then if we want to sign it, we sign it. If we don't, we don't. Yeah? Sure?
Yeah, sounds good. Good. Okay. Okay. Thank you again.
Okay. Okay, moving forward. I do have on the agenda, next, I do have a Pine Tree Center update. We have been working with the township. And so I will be bringing a purchase agreement and asking for approval on December 10th. It will be in your board pack. You know that we had gotten an appraisal regarding the property value. That value was between $644,000 to $900,000. This was depending upon which party would be responsible for the demolition of the building. The cost of the demolition was estimated at $600,000. So with that information, we had figured that the purchase price of $200,000 would be a fair market value, being that the other entity, in this case, the township, would be responsible for the demo. So again, all of that, you know, will be in this purchase agreement. But the numbers that we had been talking about, you know, we had been working with Bill Bowman and Dana Abrams. Those numbers you will see will be in the purchase agreement. Okay.
This question, even if the township doesn't demo the building, though, our fair market value, we didn't see any, was there any indication that there was any other party that would be willing to buy the building as is? Was that, you know, ever discussed? Because I don't know that the town, the township seems to have revealed that they're not going to fully demo the building, at least.
No, they, they are expecting at this point, they would demo everything but the auxiliary gym, which was an add-on, I don't remember what year.
Yeah, around the turn of the century.
But they would be looking at potentially keeping that piece of the building.
So they would have a significant demo cost to remove the rest of the building, potentially re-hook up utilities, things like that. So it's not like we're giving a building away. There's, there's still a significant demolition effort that they, that they will bear the cost of.
Yes, and that was why we figured that into the cost. And that was all discussed, yes, with Bill Bowman.
Yes.
When we, when we looked at what the market value would be. That's why there was a range within the market value.
Any other?
Just to clarify, though, the value of the property is irrespective of who buys it?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Right.
So this is roughly what we could have gotten selling it to a developer, who then would have had to go to-
Correct, because you, the problem with this here is the demo.
Yes.
It is so costly.
And if I recall, it's not just the demo, it's the age of the building, right? The potential for there need to be, like asbestos, like different things that could, when the demo occurs, also have to be-
Yes, all of that has to be, yes.
So I recall, yes.
They sign up for all of that.
I got it.
And we're, that's off our-
Hands off.
Yes, that's all.
So this purchase agreement is, we're selling the building as is, and then they get to do with it as they choose.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, that's exciting for the township. That'll be-
Very exciting.
Yes, it's a win-win, honestly, for everyone. And so, again, it is expected that it will be in your board pack on December 10th, which I will be requesting approval. And then it would go for the township, and the township, it would be taken to their board meeting on December 15th. Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Okay. All right.
Okay, and then the 2018 bond update, there's, you know, again, I sound like a broken record. But, you know, it's the auxiliary gym at the high school, which again, is expected to be done in December. I did want to provide information that regarding the bond proposal for November, we will be conducting a community survey. We've been working with GMB on that. So postcards will be sent to the whole community. Again, this is a way to ensure that not just our school families will be able to provide us feedback, but the whole community. And so the, the survey is expected to go live on November 24th. And we are hoping around the 25th, that postcards will be landing in mailboxes. And then the survey, the survey will be open for two weeks. And then the survey, the survey will be open for two weeks, and it will close on December 14th. So then we will review all of the feedback and discuss next steps at some point.
Very good. So the postcard is instructional to--
Yes. It has a QR, I'm sorry. It has a QR code that will then take people to the survey. There's also a note on the postcard that if someone would like, you know, paper copy, that they can, they can request that as well.
Heather, go ahead.
Couple of questions. First, regarding the survey, as far as format, and will there be an opportunity for people to leave open-ended comments? Or will it be more of like a, okay, so they're--
Both.
Like a rating system type of thing, or like a, okay. And then, and then who all was involved in the, creating the questions on the survey? What, like, where did all those different pieces of input come from?
Yep. It was GMB, who obviously are the experts guiding us in this. So GMB, Mark, Julie, Andrea, and myself.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
That is all I have.
That is all. Thank you. Okay. And up next is policy committee report. And I believe, did policy committee just meet?
We did.
And Scott Taylor.
Want me to do that?
Yeah, I'd love that.
Policy committee met today at 3:00 with this great big bundle of paper. It seemed that a lot of the policies were more just changing words and things like that. But there's also a pretty big one in there that's driven by the data department, the IT department. And he did not yet have a chance to go through those things. So we're going to kind of hold off on that for, until we even do a first reading for the board. And once he goes through those things, it's going to be sent back out to committee, and we're going to review those to make sure we agree with all the decisions that he picks as far as the choices that were available. And then if that, if we're all in agreeance as a committee, it will go out as first reading in the next board packet.
Just for clarity, the he is?
Craig.
Craig.
You didn't--
Craig's gone.
You didn't mention it.
Craig's gone.
Yeah. Craig.
Okay. Just for clarity for people watching, you didn't mention who the he is. For the public, Scott.
The head of the IT department. Sorry. Craig.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, student achievement. Drew.
All right. Thank you. Well, we have a lot of, lot of things going on in the teaching and learning department across the district this time of the year. Hard to believe we're coming up on December already. But just wrapped up parent teacher conferences at all levels. So had a chance to share with our families some updates there. Excited this week that the outsiders will be performed at the high school. It's always exciting to see our actors and actresses and the set design and teams that come together for that. Our career advisory committees met last week, which was, I had a chance to go out and meet with those teams. So Chad Chapel and the CTE department at the high school does a great job of working with our community partners to bring in the advisory boards. Oh, it's our fridge. Yeah. Yeah. That noise in back is just the fridge. Yeah. That weird ominous humming.
Maintaining the building well, Heidi. I see maintaining the building.
Yeah, we're, oh, boy. No dishwasher.
I got looks. I thought I said something wrong. Like this is, yeah, it's okay.
Anyway.
So our career, yes, it's a great time. But the advisory committees, I do want to mention a big thank you to not only our CTE teams, but those community partners that come in. I got a chance to sit in on the medical foundations team. I have to tell you that the feedback that the community has given, and that wasn't just for that particular group, but across our CTE department about the work that our Lake Orion Dragons are doing, and then taking out into the field, taking out into post-secondary work, they could not sing our praises enough. So just wanted to really highlight that and appreciate the support that the board has given over the years to the programs that we have that just speaks to the unique opportunities we really have for our kids that they're getting in, and industry is speaking about how we're leaders in the field. So just wanted to highlight that team. In the special ed world, as Mark mentioned, you know, Sarah has continued to hit the ground running. But one of the things that she and the entire department has done, we're really starting to dig in into long-term planning now. And she's sharing with cabinet three-year plans. She's taking feedback from staff. We're really having some really rich and deep discussions about curriculum instruction, all kids alignment. It's just a really refreshing conversation that we're able to have. And so as we continue to move into this year, I'm excited to bring some updates and ideas and things that are going on there. We're in the beginning stages for, already in January, our MLK PD planning, which will have different levels, doing a couple of different things. But what's really fun about that day is that we do have a chance for staff to lead sessions. So we're really tapping into our Lake Orion expertise. And the last thing that I wanted to mention, and there will be more information that will be coming, but because it just came out through the Department of Ed, you may have seen that they just adopted new health standards, have updated those for the first time since 2007. There are still a number of pieces in there that, there's local control, some parent voice, some work that we're going to be doing as a committee, and then discussing, obviously, with our curriculum committee and with the board. But I did just want to make you aware, you may have seen that's come out, and just to share that there will be some upcoming work with that. So those are the big highlights I have for right now. So any questions, I can answer.
Any questions for Drew? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And for the curriculum committee report, I'll actually be handling that. The, and feel free to jump in, Drew, because I know we talked a lot about the different pilots. Thank you. Couldn't even come up with the word. So feel free to jump in on that one. So the curriculum committee met Friday, November 7th. And one of the biggest topics of discussion was the district ELA curriculum follow-up and discussion. So can you just, for a quick second, actually inform the rest of the board why we're actually doing the district ELA pilot?
Yep. Absolutely. And I'll even kind of backtrack and go a little bit, I guess, 30,000-foot view on some of our, just pilots in general. What I am going to do for this week's board update is just share kind of a breakdown. I know we've discussed in different times, but even for myself, like, we've got so many moving parts right now. I'll just put kind of a comprehensive list together of some of the discussions we've had. We had our first DDCC meeting of the year last night. And that kind of really, again, put into perspective for me. We're doing a lot of great work, but there's a lot. And I just think it would help me, and I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but to share just kind of an overview there. So, or a summary of what we've talked about. But to the ELA piece, this was, going back to the summer, the Department of Ed came through with some changes and requirements, gave us a short window in relation to the science of reading. It was the, as you've heard, the dyslexia law was what was discussed. And so it put in a number of stipulations for districts to look at our ELA instruction. Right now, specifically at the elementary level, but really in the long term, it will probably have implications up through middle and high school. And so we had our team that really started to look into the list of available programs that the state gave us that we had to select from. We met with reps from every one of the companies. We went through Kate and Carrie, did a lot of digging into that. And ultimately, we came forward with the plan where our timeline was pushed a little bit by some state guidelines and requirements. And so we had to jump in right away with some training for staff, and then to jump into looking at a pilot. And that was directly tied to timelines given to us by the state, funding requirements that the state was coming at with our certain ELA programming. And so it kind of moved our timeline a little bit. So during the fall, we've been looking at, we've had a number of teachers that have piloted some work. Actually, last week, had a team from Amplify CKLA is the name of the program that we're looking at. They came out to have a chance for a number of administrators, Heidi and myself included, to get into classrooms and see students in practice, teachers in practice, representatives from CKLA that came out to observe. We've had a chance to send teams to Romeo, which is one of the districts that's been using it for a couple of years. And so we're in the process right now of gathering a lot of information. And then in December, we'll be coming back to the curriculum committee with an update, and in turn, then come forward to the board after that to share recommendation. I will say, from an instructional standpoint, it is a change, a pretty significant change from how we have done ELA instruction in the past. As you know, we've been using units of study, which is really rooted in a workshop model. This new programming that we're looking at, it really now goes to kind of a 180 to that. A lot of teacher-led instruction, but from what we've seen and the feedback that we're gathering has been extremely positive. We've had, Heidi and myself have had teachers, parents that have reached out to us, unsolicited, to share feedback from parent-teacher conferences. We've had, there's really two lines of instruction in there. There's a skills section and a knowledge section. And so the skills section is focusing on a lot of the things that I kind of equate to how we learned ELA when we were in school. We're looking at a lot of those grammatical skills, really digging into that. The knowledge section is the really cool part of, there's topics that kids are learning about, everything from Greek mythology to Mayan ancestry. The feedback that we're getting is that that has increased engagement and conversations at home with, where we've got, you know, third graders on the drive home from school, talking to their moms and dads about the Mayans and the Incans and Greek mythology, things that we never anticipated. But it's really been very positive. So that was probably a really long-winded, more detailed explanation.
I love that, actually. Thank you. Much, much better than I could have done on that. Did you have a follow-up on that, Heather?
Yeah. And then this, so in theory, would come to committee, or not in theory, will come to committee again with feedback after you've met with, how many of the teachers are currently piloting it?
We have approximately 30 across the district in all grade levels at the elementary level.
So in all grade levels at the elementary level?
So--
Just K through 5?
Correct.
Got it.
Yep.
And then it comes to the board when for our first opportunity to evaluate?
So this would most likely come in January.
Right. So pretty--
Yep.
So I know one of the concerns, or there were a few concerns brought up in committee regarding it. And it's the rush timeline. Obviously, the state put us in that position, but it's still something to consider. The state will not be covering the entirety of the curriculum. I believe the remaining amount cost to the district will be close to $400,000 to $500,000?
Total cost for implementation would be about $1 million. The state has funded through their grants about $600,000 to $650,000.
Right. So there's still that little bit left over. And I believe in the presentation, which will the entire board be seeing that presentation? That, okay. So you'll get the opportunity here then, just some of those things. I do know that regards to what I believe the dyslexia laws require, we currently, with what we teach now, are in compliance with those, correct?
We, we are, but there are different stipulations as well, that if we were not to take this and go away, there's components to it that if we don't follow certain requirements, or we don't notify our families of going a certain way, that there's potential for FTE loss in certain areas. So going forward with this path has been the best-case scenario for us in finding an instructional practice that is, we're finding in some areas it really caught up with some of our, I wouldn't say that we had holes, but more of like our phonological awareness and things like that, that it's helping--
Right. Can you do phonics?
Yes.
She mentioned that.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. There was definitely been some, some good discussion. And so I think I'm looking forward to hearing what the board thinks once we have all of the pieces. But that was a big chunk, I think.
That was.
And then just, what is the DDDDC committee that you mentioned?
Yes. So that is our district department chair council.
Okay.
And so that, a little bit of an update on that group, that has been one that we've had, that group's been in place, I think Dave Viter, who was prior to Heidi and myself in this role, that committee was created. It's a collection of our department chairs across the district, our instructional experts. This year, we have, Carrie and I had a chance to really look at that group and made some adjustments to it that kind of streamlined it up to 2025 and sort of the practices we have. One of the things that I'm excited to share out of that is that we currently, as you know, we have a high school curriculum renewal group, that they, those are groups that bring all of our new courses, obviously, from the high school, and goes through our process, through DDCC, to the curriculum committee, and to the board. I am working to create a middle school version of that as well, so that we will have a team of middle school staff that will follow a similar process so that as we move forward, if there's new courses or curriculum adjustments that we would like to bring to the board for approval, specifically to middle school, would follow the same process. So DDCC, that is that group encompasses everyone. But they are final, I would say, check and balance as we go through course modifications, new course proposals, that they take a final look at it before I bring it forward to the committee and into the full board for approval.
And just for my information, what is the process for pilots to even begin? So does it go, you said to that committee, but it doesn't go to curriculum first? Because in this case, it didn't. Is that typically, what's the process for that?
So typically, what we've done in, in the past, we've even created now paperwork proposals for if groups, specifically departments, wanted to do a pilot, they would bring that paperwork forward to the teaching and learning department. Then it would kind of move through the process from there. And when we got to the actual adoption, and where I would bring a recommendation to you, that would be where we'd go through the curriculum committee to the full board, and then have a presentation here for, for full adoption.
For full adoption. But to start the pilot, or any pilot, it goes to a paper process--
That comes--
To the teaching and learning?
Yes.
And then that's it, right?
Yes.
To start it?
To start it. Correct. Yeah. And I will share too, that we're, you know, and that's one of the pieces that, as we go through, quite honestly, the next couple of years, you know, I think I've shared before, but, you know, it's been probably, I'd say, a good 10 or 10 to 15 years, depending on our departments, where we've really dug in and done some look. And so Carrie and I have looked at mapping out a five-year plan of how do we really take a look at our current curriculum? And it doesn't necessarily, I should preface, it doesn't mean that we are making massive changes or feel the need to make it. It's just a good time to review and make sure we're aligned with everything. However, that being said, also doing it fiscally responsibly as well. Understanding that, you know, a lot of times pilots are, come at a very minimal to no cost. But then, obviously, implementation, it's not free to go with our new resources. So trying to balance that out to meet the needs of our students and our staff, but recognizing our budget is, you know, a very real part of that as well.
And just popped in my head, and then we can, you know, has there been any feedback on the fact that we are just currently implementing a new math at the levels as well?
That is actually--
And doing a brand-new ELA? Because what I understand about the CKLA is it takes two years to get the teachers trained fully on the process as well.
That's a great question. And quite honestly, that was one of the wonderings that we had with our elementary team, because we did, you're absolutely right. We just put them through a multi-year pilot and implementation of a new math curriculum. What we have found is that from our pilot teachers so far, that has, has been a very positive conversation. And the other piece of feedback that we've received so far is that, as with any new curriculum, the first year is pretty heavy lift, you know, it's obviously the training, your learning. However, the way that this program is structured in years two through every year beyond that, it's actually, the planning is really kind of taken care of. That it is actually, in a lot of ways, a feedback receiving, it's kind of taking time and a little bit of stress in planning, or what we're seeing could take the time and stress off of planning for that. So, thank you.
Awesome. So as Drew mentioned, that was the bulk of our conversation, or Heather mentioned that was the bulk of it. But we did also touch on some, the learning support services and interventionists within the district. And remind me, did you say a presentation is eventually going to come to the board on that?
I'm gonna, we'll start with the curriculum committee with an update, and then, yep.
Eventually, yeah. Just looking at, because I know when we've had our, you know, test score, or, you know, our beginning, end of, middle of the year reports, you know, one of the biggest questions was learning support services, and who qualifies, and, you know, how many students, and what that looks like with interventionists. I know the coaches. So we just had a discussion on that, you know, regarding the current programming. And, you know, Drew will bring updates as necessary. And then lastly, does the secondary world pilot, secondary world language pilot, just an update as it relates to the cost, the timing, 6th through 12th grades, Spanish alignment and implementation? And that was just a quick update. And do we have a timeline on that again for?
Hopefully, could bring that after the turn of the year, but that will be completely budgeted. budget-dependent right now. Carrie and I need to sit down and take a look at, now that we have a, a full estimate and kind of know where some of our other pilots are, are falling. So hopefully, right after the turn of the, the, the calendar year.
Excellent. All right. Any quick, quick Bergit? Sorry.
Thank you. I, I just want some clarification if I could have. Tried to take everything you said in about the pilot, Drew, and the Amplify CKLA is what it's called. That was one of how many curriculums that you could choose from? And then what was the deadline the state imparted on you?
So they came, I believe it was a total of, I think we had 10, possibly 11 choices that were there. They originally, when the law was going through, the original timeline for making a decision was going to be in January of 2026. And then at the tail end of the school year, in June, they kind of flipped it all on us and said, we're going to release the, the programs to the list, right? The list to look at, and you have essentially two weeks to make a decision. And so at that point, to get into the, the grant for funding, you had to decide if you were going to go and there was a different level of tiers. You could go with tier one instruction, tier, tier two, different areas. This one, when we looked at everything, was our best option and made the most sense for us with the needs that we had in the district. And so we had to sort of jump in and commit to going forward. Now, one of the things that districts were able to do was, and where we're, we're using the term pilot, districts were able to kind of find some wiggle room to say, we're not going to necessarily commit, we want a trial period, so to speak, to go and have a chance to try this out before committing. Obviously, time, resources, money into this didn't feel, most districts fortunately didn't feel that that was a good choice to make without actually experiencing with our teachers. So our timeline got massively squished from January 2026 to a two-week window and then had to jump in. So it is, I will say, it is a very different timeline than we've ever had, obviously, for when we bring proposals here. Just a little wonky from the state of Michigan.
MDE is doing a lot of interesting things lately, aren't they?
They are, yeah.
I'm trying to process, there's multiple pilots going on then, right? So aside from the world language one, there's, there's something AP going on?
So we have some AP social studies, and that is some specific courses at the high school. Those, again, we have not looked at those resources and updates in about 10 years. And so those, in talking to the department, were ones that by college board standards, we needed to refresh and look at. So they're trying that. World language is the one, that's kind of been an ongoing one for a little while, going back to last year. And that is aligning our sixth through 12, primarily our Spanish instruction. And then with science, we've had, really taken a look at a couple of different things like our open PSYAD is the, the term that's used for looking at a curriculum for that of, and more looking at how are we lining that up with some of our graduation requirements and pathways and things like that. And then math, I'm sorry, high school math, that's not a pilot any longer, we're in the implementation stage of that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on curriculum committee? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, human resources with Adam.
Thank you, Danielle. I'll be quick. Through our strategic plan, our leadership development committee met recently just to discuss timelines and processes for our second cohort for that administrators group, our aspiring administrators group. So we're excited for that. We'll get, you know, we talked about the application process and, you know, timelines for it and topics that we were going to address through the cohort. Early in January, we'll send out the application to interested staff members or to staff members to express their interest. And then we'll have a timeline, a goal of having our first meeting for that second cohort in early, late winter, early spring, February, March timeline. So excited for that. And cohort number two to be continuing. And then our emergency operations plans or EOPs for each building are in the, are due to be updated this year, and we are in the final stages of those updates. So I'm excited for those. Those are all equipped with our new standard response protocol language from the state of Michigan. So I'll have an update on those in the near future as well. And that is all from HR.
Okay. Any questions for HR and Adam? All right. Thank you. Next up, finance and operations with Andrea.
Okay. Thank you. Just as a follow-up to the audit, I really want to put out a huge thank you to Shannon Moynihan. She does the lion's share of the work, getting everybody organized and, and getting all the information to Plant Moran. But that also involves in our office Julie Tyson, Abby Marash, Caitlin Lindberg, what was Maureen, but cabinet as well and the HR department, because everybody's roles that we do throughout the year to record the expenses really, really affects the end audit. So I just want to thank everybody, including directors, you know, we've been trying to increase our budget meetings and really watching, you know, where we're at, knowing all the uncertainties that we have. So now that the audit is done, we are full-fledged in the amendment of the current year budget as we've already kind of spoke. We've kind of got the revenue side, but working on the expense side, so that amendment will come first reading in January. We are working on that. So that's my updates. And then on the agenda is the monthly financial report for October, focusing on the general fund. We've received $22.2 million in revenue to date, which is 24.5% of the budget, and we've recognized expenditures of $25.5 million, representing 23.7% of the budget. There's also a multitude of additional schedules in there if anybody has any questions.
Questions.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now that is actually going to move us into our action items. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the following consent agenda items. Approve payment of the October bills in the amount of $11,478,719.59. Approve minutes from the November 5th regular, the November 5th finance committee and the November 7th 2025 curriculum committee meetings. And also approving out-of-state and overnight field trip requests for the LOHS leadership class to Grand Rapids, Michigan on February 21st through the 23rd of 2026.
Thank you, Bergit. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you for all of the support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our next and last action item is, may please have a motion for the acceptance of the 2024-25 audited financial statements.
I move to accept the 2024-2025 audited financial statements as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you for support again. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Once again, motion carries. Moves us to public participation for other non-action items and topics, which there are no participants this evening. So we will go to recap and next steps.
I have noted here that we will work on verifying the policy and bylaws for second readings.
Yes. And in addition, Julie, you'll, you'll be sending out a calendar invite for a potential December forest meeting if necessary, just to get that on our calendar for.
Yes, and letterhead.
And letterhead with, for the nonpartisan.
You're just sending us the letterhead?
Or the?
I'm just, I'm just kidding. That would be.
Thank you.
All you will need to do is sign and deliver.
Okay. We can do that. Thank you, Julie. And now we can move to closing comments. Andrea.
Okay. I just want to thank our presenters tonight, Mackenzie Flynn from Trune. I think that was a lot of very good information. Donna from Plant Moran. And a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Adam?
Yep. Thank you to Mackenzie and Trune for their guidance and presentation tonight. Big thank you to Andrea, shout out to her department, partnering with Plant Moran for our annual audit, a lot of work that goes into that. I'm excited for the high school production of outsiders. I wish everybody involved with that production the best of luck. And with the Thanksgiving holiday ahead of us, a big thank you and express of being grateful for all of the board, cabinet, and our wonderful staff and community for all that we do in Lake Orion. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew?
Thank you to our presenters tonight and to Andrea and her department. That's awesome and a huge congratulations on the audit and just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Very thankful for all of you.
All right. Thank you to Donna and to the business office. And I'm really excited about the outsiders, one of my favorite books of all time. So I will be there tomorrow and I'll be selling wooden roses. So make sure you stop by to get yours. And then also today, we met for the first time with our student advisory council at the high school. So that was awesome. And then what else do I have on here? Happy Thanksgiving to everyone and, yeah, enjoy time with friends and family. Thankful for everyone.
Thank you. All right. Bergit.
Yeah, I want to thank my colleagues up here for the honest and open discussion we had for 31AA. I really appreciate that. And I'm grateful that Mackenzie was here to guide us through. Stay tuned, right?
Right.
I appreciate the audit report and I'm, I'm grateful for your team, you and your team, Andrea. Appreciate that and all the work it takes to accomplish that and to maintain the budget year in and year out. So thank you. And yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Excellent. Jake?
Yeah, I think we get, we get the auditor's report and as Andrea alluded to, it's, it's a big thing on our department, but I mean, bigger than the work they put into the audit is the work that they put in to get the unmodified opinion throughout the year. That the, the way that they account for things and, and, and present them accurately allows the community to have high trust in the financials that are reported. So that's so important. And I love the presentations tonight, attorneys and auditors, my kind of, my kind of vibe. And good luck to the swimmers at State and break a leg and stay gold, Pony Boy.
Love it. Thank you, Jake. Scott.
How do I follow that?
I know. Difficult, isn't it?
It's been a long day. We've been here since three. So I appreciate everybody here. I appreciate, like Bergit said, it was a great conversation that we had. And I think that on the surface, it seems like, you know, how, how can you not accept this money and things like that? But I think that we, we need to be very cognizant of all these implications and how it affects everyone that we represent. So have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, yeah, that was a very informative audit and, and helpful from the attorney. And just a reminder that the audits are available on the district transparency website. So anytime you want to look at that for yourself, and there's not many entities that will put an independent audit online for everyone to see, so make sure to look and there's a lot of information on there. One thing that I wanted to mention, that the nonpartisan school board elections, I really think society in general would benefit from less partisanship. So let's look for these things, these attempted, attempts to wedge us apart and, and don't go along with it. In the immortal words of Pony Boy. Maybe the two different worlds we lived in weren't so different, we saw the same sunset. And just, just remember things like that. A good, good teachable moment. Speaking of which, I plan to be there for the outsiders tomorrow and I will be bringing a date, that's Mrs. Faber, for the date. If she's not in bed, she tends to go to bed quite early and I hope she's not watching right now. Might be past her bedtime. So, so that could be a little surprise date and we'll, we'll share the, a salad and a sandwich somewhere.
Where?
No comment on that one yet. Finally, I just want to give a, a thank you to the PTOs around the district. My time as a teacher and as a parent, I've really appreciated some of the stuff they've done, you know, for students, for special events, the assemblies and the friends and fun night. That's a lot of work. It's a ton of work. And, and they do things for the staff members, little surprises, treats and meals, especially during the parent-teacher conference times. So thanks so much to them for all they're giving, a lot of them, you know, squeezing that into their schedule isn't easy. And they're always looking for more participants. So if you are able to help, you know, reach out to your, your, your school and say, hey, I want to be a part of, of some of that. It's a really fun time. So thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
I'm not sure what else can be said tonight. We've had quite a few comments. Definitely want to thank our auditors and our attorneys that came tonight to really very important topics to help to give transparency around budgeting and around where we're spending dollars, how we're spending dollars, and the thoughtful approaches we take to spending the dollars. So thank you guys very much for coming and doing that and Andrea and her team for helping lead both of those topics, actually. And then happy Thanksgiving. We all are very thankful. I think everyone said we're thankful. We're thankful for everybody that sits up here. We're thankful for the entire community that helps us be here. And most importantly, for the children that we're all here to support in their journey of learning. So thank you very much. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
Heather?
Yeah, ditto. To everything to the left and to the right. Thanksgiving is great for so many reasons. And I always try to recognize that being thankful is something that we can have in front of us all the time, because I think all of us have things that happen to us, things that might be unfair, things that we don't think will go the way that we want them to. And we can always find a way to be thankful, always. And so I'm certainly grateful to be a part of this team and this community and happy Thanksgiving.
All right. And for me, actually, I had the opportunity to talk with our township supervisor, Chris Barnett, today. And he expressed his thankfulness, actually, for the partnership that he has with the school and just how appreciative he is that our school community and the township can work together for really the greater good of the community, because we are not separate entities, right? We, you know, I mean, strong schools, I mean, we are, but strong schools, strong community, you know, things of that nature. And he even surfaced, you know, the idea that if you look around, that's, you know, not how it is everywhere. And so he's really grateful as well. And he wanted me to pass that on to all of you, that he is very grateful for the partnership and the opportunity, you know, that, that the township's had with the district. So, so I wanted to share that with you. And now we will be moving into closed session. So may please have a motion to enter into closed session.
I move that we enter into closed session for the purposes of superintendent evaluation.
Thank you. Support. Any discussion? And with that, roll call, please, Julie.
What's that?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. And that.[1759.61]